Okay, we just called the meeting to order at 7:01. Welcome, everybody. We're gonna stand for the pledge. Oh, and I think we wanted to just point out fire exits. Thank you for those attending in person. Bob, you wanna help me out? We have one over here to the parking lot, behind us, to the library itself and the courtyard.
And the courtyard exits.
Thank you for pointing that out.
I'll sort of assertive about that.
And then, and the additional exit off the stage as well. All right. Is that procedure, that's standard procedure? Okay, great. So we've done that, now we're gonna face the flag and say the pledge. Okay. Um. I don't know, you've added roll call, are you actually expecting us to do roll call? Or? So, so for that, we have our four, five trustees in person. Dana Wu is on route to join us in person originally. We thought she was going to be participating remotely. And Bob Conrad is joining us as our director. Okay. Um. Great, so. We have, we're going to enter into executive session for the purposes of discussing secure, security proposals and performance expectations with our new director. And I believe that is Mrs. Wu joining us, so she will be in the executive session with us below Dana. Can I get a motion to enter into the executive session?
I make a motion to enter into executive session. At 7:02.
For the purpose of security, reviewing security proposal.
For the purpose of reviewing security proposals.
And performance.
And performance expectations.
Thank you, Pam. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Brian is seconding. All in favor? Unanimous? Okay. Dana, you were in favor as well? Okay, unanimous. All right, thank you. We will return in about, what do we think? Fifteen to twenty minutes, thank you. Welcome back, everyone. It's 7:30. The board has just returned from an executive session where no actions were taken and no motion made. Okay. Um. It is now my distinct pleasure to, to put up the new slate of officers. So let's put. Yeah, didn't make it into the packet.
It is, it's, it's an addendum to it.
Okay. So. I'm not on the internet, I'm sorry. Let, I, I will, I'm not sure, I think there was specific language in the slate that I would like to read off.
I'll put it up there.
Good thing we're in a library. Got my wifi up, here we go. Okay. The officers of the library shall be president, a vice president, a finance officer, and a secretary. The board shall, at its first meeting in each calendar year, elect the above-named officers from their own number to serve from the date of the meeting at which they are elected until the subsequent January and thereafter, until their respective successors are duly elected. So at this time, in accordance with the Chappaqua Library Bylaws, Article 3, Officers, Section 2, Election in Terms of Office, the following slate of officers is presented for the 2023 calendar year. The election will take place at the beginning of this board meeting right now. President Jennifer Feige, Vice President Pam Moskowitz, Finance Officer Brian Cook, Secretary Dana Wu. I make a motion to accept the slate of nominations for the Chappaqua Library 2023 Library Board. Do I have a second?
I seconded.
Pam is seconding. All in favor? Sorry, hold on. Before I ask for the final vote, I'll take any questions or comments. Okay, I, I wanna just address the public for a moment and say thank you for allowing me to serve as your president for the past year. It's been my distinct pleasure. We have a brand-new board. It's very young, and I'm super excited to elect these officers and give them my full confidence moving forward. So, without any further anything. All in favor? I. Unanimous? Okay. And with that, I would like to introduce our new president, Jennifer Feige.
Thank you, thank you very much. We did want to clarify committees on a go-forward basis. You'll see that information in the agenda. The Building and Grounds Committee really changes to myself and Pam Moskowitz. Finance Committee remains unchanged, chaired by Brian Cook, supported by Dana Wu as member. Our Policy Bylaws Committee changes to Chair Pam Moskowitz, supported by Member Brian Cook. Communications.
Oh, okay. Are you accepting that?
In which, in how is it?
Sure.
Okay, great. Correction then. Policy and bylaw, right. Our Policy and Bylaws Committee will be chaired by Pam Moskowitz and supported by Liz Amson. Thank you very much. Our Communications Committee will continue to be chaired by Dana Wu and supported by Member Pam Moskowitz. And I am requesting the creation of a new committee, HR and Governance, to be chaired by Dana Wu with Brian Cook as member. And this would be an ad hoc meeting.
I'm sorry, did we, which one did you ask me to be on?
Policy bylaws. And to continue on, the final committee would be in security chaired by myself, supported by you. Okay. Mm-hmm. Right. Well, I think the next action will be to accept the minutes from our prior meeting, our regular meeting on December 20th, 2022. Do I have a motion? I make a motion to accept.
We just, we just discussed if there are any comments. Okay. Okay. Seven minutes. All right. Okay, then, in terms, so you have accepted, so you'll, you can let us know the minutes have been accepted.
So with that, the December 20th, 2022 minutes are accepted as presented. Thank you all very much. Moving into the president's report, I just wanted to say that I'm very excited. I think that this board we have is exceptional. They've all been working very hard. They're very passionate about this gem of a library that we have in Chappaqua and ensuring that it provides the best possible collection services, programming, et cetera, for our community. So. And we're supported by our exciting new hire since November 2022, Bob Conrad as our director. So, a lot of exciting things on a go-forward basis. A few notes I wanted to make. I hope everyone has been enjoying the services and programming of our library. Walking in to our library, you'll see decorations in association with the Lunar New Year. I personally enjoyed the Mary Calvi report on her book regarding Teddy Roosevelt and, and his love Alice. Really amazing author presentation. I've always enjoyed reading about the Roosevelts. One of my favorite books was River of Doubt, where he, as a young man, toured the Amazon in a period of crisis. Bob, were you going to add something?
No.
Oh, I thought, sorry, your hand raised. And I wanted to bring to everyone's attention, unfortunately, I'm unable to attend because of a business trip. But we have a peace march that is going to begin at Scattered Books, at the Peace Bullet Scattered Books in town on Sunday, the 29th, at 12:30 PM. It will, the march will proceed to our library, and we will have programming there in, in line with Martin Luther King and civil rights and those principles. So I think it's going to, I'm hoping for an excellent turnout from our town with all that's going on in our country today. And very excited that we get to be such an active part of that process.
And it's co-sponsored by Lotsenbaum Community and the School District. And that's our wonderful collaborative effort. And thank you, Bob, and your staff for reaching out and making it possible.
We, we did want to raise the subject of diversity, equity, and inclusion. We had an incident that, the timing was, was fairly irregular. It was brought to our attention, it was brought to the public's attention with the posting of the video from the December 14th, 2022 Board of Education meeting for Chappaqua Central School District, wherein a student spoke of an incident involving hate speech at our library. We researched that. Bob has been very involved, as, as has been the whole board. And happily, it, I think the library handled the incident very well. We had excellent policies in place. Those policies were followed by staff. The situation was de-escalated and ceased to be a problem. And no one needed to be asked to leave, et cetera. Nevertheless, it's, it's raised a lot of conversation for, for our board. And we've taken a number of steps. Liz, as president, reached out to an inquiring citizen in town. I believe you spoke with the examiner as well, or shared information with him?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. She connected with a message to the CREI Committee for Newcastle. And today, Bob Conrad, Pam Moskowitz, and I were able to meet with Shukrana Banerjee, who's one of the co-chairs for CREI. And we talked about the incident. We talked, more importantly, about things in place at the library, things under consideration. And we wanted to have some discussion about that today. There are a few things that we wanted you to know in, in terms of things that pre-existed this event, as well as subsequent actions. So I mentioned the policies that were in place and were adequate to the situation and were well-followed. We also have, and Bob may speak more about this, an active DEI committee, which was put in place in 2021, headed up by, or involving the heads of the various departments that Bob manages at the library. We are looking into modifications to policies to make sure that we are more specifically addressing things like hate speech and hate symbols. And Pam Moskowitz has been leading that effort. We're going to attend the next CREI meeting, which is on February 6th. So I think that there's been a good level of activity concerning this event. Where a future action will involve communication with the school district to set up potential channels of communication should we have future incidents that involve students.
So we, the library generally does not share, because we can't when it involves students. So just to, like, just, our role is very different than the school district. And even if your child is doing something here, the school will never, like, that's not a sharing channel. We don't do that. Because they're anonymous. After 12, they don't, that doesn't happen. This is a safe space for every person, and it's separate. Sorry, I don't want anyone to think that there is sharing where there isn't, or that there is any. I think you can speak to a library's role within the community a little bit, maybe, to clarify this.
Well, I won't, but Jen, can I add on a couple of things I think that you missed that are really important?
Yeah.
One is that the library board adopted in its strategic plan, in its monitoring diversity and equity and inclusion principles was the number-one component of that plan, us to address over the next few years. And then, a second thing I would like to point out is that by, this was really the first security incident brought to my attention as a new director. And it brought to my attention that we didn't have a really great internal communication, not specific to this incident or student incidents, but broadly patron misconduct. So we instituted a procedure by which frontline staff can track names and descriptions of potentially problem patrons. And the remainder of staff can use those to add on further information. And we can find a way to make sure that this remains a safe, warm, and welcoming environment for all of our users.
And as we discussed, you're going to speak in, at our February meeting on progress overseen with respect to that long-range plan.
And at February and quarterly, it might hope to give long-range plan status updates until the plan is either completed as a checklist, all of the boxes are checked, or the time has run out.
Do we know the perpetrator of the alleged crime? Middle school students. So it was a middle school kid acting stupidly. Free, the library is not a bastion of hate.
No.
I just wanted to clarify that.
And also, Bob, you know, because we do so much already that was in place, the DEI committee, in terms of programming, collections, we're, we're trying to you know, elevate marginalized voices as much as possible, but not just in regards to race and inclusion, but other ways. You know, I think that is something, you know, we do have like the National Inclusive Month coming up, right? I mean, there's lots of things that we do that reflect how we support diversity, and I, and I think that's important to, to share how much the staff really does, all the different months or weeks that we can celebrate. You know, there's probably more than even appears on the events, or, you know what I'm saying? Though I think that's something maybe we can emphasize. It's already being done, but maybe there's a way of emphasizing it. You know, for example.
The audit, or the, or the audits that, that's talked about. How our librarians are fantastic about doing things like that.
You know, even in our parenting section, like, there's just so many things that we have. And maybe there's just a way of, in your quarterly presentation, staff, to sort of, to highlight that by having that as a theme, you know? Because we already are doing it.
Yeah, no, especially a lot of diversity work in particular. Libraries don't need a board authorized expectation, because it's a professional expectation.
Yes.
Diverse and inclusive collections. Those are just what we call good collections. It would be a pretty boring library if books didn't have other voices. That said, though, we are, as a profession broadly, we're doing this work because what we're finding is, you know, we cater to our best users, our most frequent users. And it's important to also build collections that appeal to new demographics and new communities and communities in transition, and that prepare young people for the world outside of their communities. So we're trying to, we as a profession broadly are trying to address our role towards these institutional isms, supporting and upholding them, when we just would rather not. Let's break them down.
So we had agreed we would discuss should we put something on the website with respect to this incident? I think the group leans away from that. Should we put a statement on the website that speaks to our drive for inclusion? And thirdly, should we create a new policy oriented around diversity, equity, and inclusion? I think everything you bring up is important. And as well as the library's new mission statement could reflect our, our intention. And the conversation to, to have a separate DEI policy is something that the policy committee will continue to talk to Bob about. It's, it's interest, it's necessity, because in the, in the patron conduct policy, the newer vibes, there, we, we go into, we have changed the general under our general behavior expectations, that that has been dramatically increased to reflect. While it did do a very, it did a very good job, we're actually still going towards an excellent job towards a, a general behavior in terms of hate speech, hate symbols, fighting words, slurs, et cetera. So I think we're going to sit with this and then decide if we do need a separate, or we want a separate DEI policy.
And I don't, yeah, I don't know how that would look different than the, the Bill of Rights that we already have as our adopted policy, because a lot of, like, to follow on what Bob was saying, this is the profession. So everything that's done in the library serves that master to some extent. And so our, our primary master at ALA already gave us that language. We, we have that as part of our policy. And we should really just, we should be reaffirming those annually. I would have liked to do it at this meeting, but didn't make it in the packet. So for February, we'll bring the Bill of Rights back, we'll reaffirm it. Reaffirm the Bill of Rights, and then we can look at whether we want our own flavor of that infused in a new mission statement, or where it might, you know, it may not necessarily be an incremental policy.
Okay. Okay.
Well, I think if that's what they're proposing that we do, then I do think we need some more specific examples. If you kind of know that we're doing the audits and corrections and everything, then maybe that would all fit in some examples, that the public needs to know. They don't, maybe know that everybody, no, you know, I think what we say about freedom of, you know, information and having access to everything. And that goes to, you know, this moment in our country about banning books, like, I think that's all in there. So I, I think it's important to be able to say, like, what exactly we are affirming, you know? We're not, right? And, and, and so whatever examples in that, what we affirm would be better. Or in addition to whatever this bill, I'm not even sure what the bill phrase exactly is, so.
So we'll have to say.
Yeah, I can't even say.
But some, but sometimes also that this is for, this is for the public. And, and it just could be part of our mission to keep informing the public of our mission. And, and our mission in terms of its activities, the programs, the collections, things like that.
I pointed out in our last, at our last long-range plan meeting, the librarians said that the biggest criticism of our collection would be that have enough summer beach romantic books to read, so.
Good point. Mm-hmm. Right. The collection criticism is, is wonderful, thank you. All right, but if we're closing that out, we can turn to Bob for the director's report.
All right, as promised, the director's report is primarily written. You'll see adult services report, you'll see an adult program report. In the last month, I promised you a column where you would fill in web views seen or recorded and, and we broadcast videos. Unfortunately, I was not able to deliver that data. Our adult program coordinator relied on the Newcastle media tenant for those services. And I have not yet reassigned that duty, I'm just going back and checking the reviews. But looking at the children's room program attendance, it's very strong, as you know. The number of programs is robust, as you know, and performing outreach and so on. So in addition to the written comments, I'll just add a couple thoughts that things taking up your library director's time. Well, we did look at the rules of conduct, and we did develop the procedures for internal staff communications. And hand-in-hand with that is actually some work being done by the policy committee, revising the rules of conduct. And we want to make sure that we just don't only have rules of conduct, but they're actually enforceable. They have, by enforceable, I mean that there's a way, a real practical way, that library staff who don't know the names of, or faces of everyone coming through the door can actually follow up with some of our patrons as, as needed. And in a worst-case scenario, we could advance something to the board for their attention or for their action. Moving on from that, there were, let's see, oh, I was advancing some age, some personal questions through civil service. Cantel and I are still awaiting our official training, so that just means that the number of questions I have is much larger than I will have after we got our training. And I got a really interesting question came up regarding food and wine served at library programs. I reached out to the other WLS directors, and we proceeded with caution doing what we've been doing, and.
Which is what?
Questions regarding. Yeah. Right, well, food at library programs is pretty standard. Most, most of us will serve pizza or other forms of prepared food at library programs. And the question I put to other library directors was, you know, is, is that how we can do things in Westchester County? It would, it would seem to be, and we essentially got a agreement with some of the library directors. But once we have legal counsel in the room, I'll, I'll ask again.
Okay, great.
And for, then we're moving things along with WLS to unify the staff emails. We're not all on the same domain. And to remove VDI virtual desktop incubates from a number of staff computers and move towards a shared server where we can access files both in, in, inside the library and potentially from home for those who do the work at home.
The VDI, was that the old provider? Or was that WLS?
WLS has VDI. W L S has V D I on a number of our machines that they're removing in support of. A different tech setup that will allow us to have a shared server um, with remote access.
Okay, great. Um, and then there was something about five extra machines, that was a new machines or found machines?
Those, those weren't new since I got here. They were found that that needed additional support. So um. Liz is referring to. Revised W L S contract, but I think the board is.
It's coming up later tonight, but I figured while you're talking about.
Yeah. So, so we had already signed the contracts with W L S for support. And they sent somebody into the facility to do a headcount, really a screen count. Of our machines and they found that we had five more that they would support.
Okay, because they came and did the count originally.
They found five more.
Do, do we know which five weren't on there? Because I'm just like, if. They're counting and the numbers are changing, but you didn't order any new machines, so.
I don't think it's the Chromebooks um. I'm gonna ask if Chantel, do you happen to know which five?
The director is mine, Jones, uh, the benefits office. And I forget what the last one was.
Okay. They legitimately are in mental machines.
So now, if they walk around out there, one, two, three, four, five, but they didn't do a proper count in here.
So staff office machines, they were, they were counting machines out on the floor.
Right, so if we can just ask that. Ideally, we pick one day a year and we do all our inventory against that date. But we should know how many machines we have and we could probably maybe avoid. Um, avoid this W L S, because it's uncomfortable, because then it feels like, did they, you know.
Yeah, the problem was the contract wasn't addressed before expiration and so it was all the one Bob joined us.
Right, right. This is legacy issues that we don't want to carry into another surface level agreement. So what we're asking is. That we have one day a year that you, where you're gonna, in, you know, that'll be the day that we had inventory numbers. That way, the board knows that the number is the number and it doesn't keep moving every time W L S comes under our roof.
Okay.
So that would include the machines that they are, you know, that they're responsible for for us as well as all of our equipment. Having comprehensive understanding of what's under this roof is a goal. And I'm glad they're moving away from V D I because I was here for the tail end of that pain. So it's very, it's a, it's a positive development and all things are moving in the right direction, so that's good.
No, that completes my report.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'm just looking through the attachments that you sent. Um, one question that I had here with children's, she wrote or someone wrote departmental challenges. Was that because of staff or patrons not coming, illness and no shows?
That's a great question.
Okay, um. I I think um, second question I had here was about the story walk. And again, we just had our long range meeting. Conversation about what it means to validate program groups, you know, survey. So this statement here, our story walks begin to be successful. And that's very qualitative. I'm sure nobody is standing there and getting watching, you know, how many kids are coming by. She does put here, you know. Compliments, you know, so I'm sure people come back and say. But that just goes to that question, right? Like, what are we really counting and what's successful?
Yeah.
How we need feedback, because those are actually out out in the public with those story block things of like.
I suspect, but will confirm.
It would just be interesting.
That. Successful is because they're getting positive feedback.
And that's great. Um, on the cert department report, I think that's great. You uh, clarified more about what's going on with the auto renewal. And I had a question here about this four day storm closure. It says the combined four day storm closure and holiday break left circulation with thousands of items to process. Shout out to our night custodians, thank you night custodians, who are coming in over the holiday to empty the drops and organize return items. So I want to understand the impact of that and I wanted to know um, if there was any overtime that we. Needed to solve that problem. You don't have to answer it now, but just as a question. Uh, new library cards have been ordered and should be available in February. Wonderful. That's great. And I was wondering, uh, those with the new logo then, the new logos and are we going?
We're doing a horizontal and a vertical and we'll let people choose which one they prefer. When we run out of one, those are the ones to reorder again. My thinking is we're not. We'll run out eventually, but it doesn't cost the library anymore to order more now than. You know, repeatedly, so.
Okay, but we want to start with a two design. That's great, okay. And with that, is there a push for signup of new library cards for folks who, for new, for new people to sign up or. The old, you know. Don't even, is there a push?
Usually, most libraries do a push at back to school season and then if you can find additional reasons to do a push, we can look into that.
But but the challenge is for like someone with an existing card, in order to get that new logo. You're taking a different library card number or you can still get the card and retain your old library card number?
I know, you give up your old number to get a new card. Many people uh, would enjoy the new card with the new logo and they don't care about. Uh, other people, you can pry their old number away from them. You know, out of their cold dead hands. Uh, so there's a range of feelings on the issue.
Well.
But if you're asking, um, do we have a, uh, if you, if the board would like to waive um, placement card fee. That's something that's commonly done upon a rollout.
What's our replacement card?
I don't know.
Like a dollar or two? One doll, one dollar.
So if you wanted to waive the replacement fee for new library cards. For the, excuse me, for replacement library card. For the month of February and March, something like that.
I mean, what is National Library? I think that, I think that.
I don't think we need to waive anything, Bob. If they give you a card, you can give them a card. It's only when they don't have the card that we have to charge them.
I am not intimately familiar with policies, so.
I think if they have the cards, so. I think more important besides the waving is if anybody comes up. For one and has overdue books or finds that we haven't collected. I'd probably feel more strongly about giving them a new card in that case than they do about the dollar.
Right, well, any, any overdue, any fees attached to the account, transfer.
Yeah, yeah, but I'm saying, do they need to pay?
Yeah.
Before we give them a brand new shiny card, but that's, that's just me.
Well, the, the other common practice that you see is um. If people's digital accounts don't require um, what am I trying to say? That people's accounts can can still work for digital content. Because just because they have the trouble returning books or losing books. Or damaging books, doesn't mean that we would want to take them off from our digital content, which actually is a solution to their problem. So many libraries are structured so that people can even do that access some suites of services. Um, again, I I'm not intimately familiar with how exactly we do it here, I'm sorry.
That, that's kind of the issue with switching cards is that. If you're using, if you're a real library user, you're gonna be having to switch that card number multiple places unless you can leave. You can't leave both that, so.
No, the.
Yeah, so someone's, so I guess at cert, they would have to be explaining to people that you're gonna have to change your hoopla, your canopy. Your, well, your online login, all of those logins that Libby, anything that they're using from the Chappaqua Library would have to be updated. So I don't, and I don't know if anyone's, no one's solving for that problem, so. But we could offer potentially, you could have times when there was a librarian specifically to help you with your. I don't know, we change patterns all the time in our life these days, right? Like, I don't think that's shocking that we might need to update something. Um, one more thing related to this, um, Bob, was uh, we did have a closing this. December, right, because of weather. Um, and and maybe that's something that, uh, you know, Jen will bring up in her meetings with you, but um. What I was interested in in our discussions about all that is, you know, uh. Librarian on duty schedule and how you arrange that and, you know, who like. In case of a late something or something, like how do we know what the schedule is of the board? Like, how would we know? Who's the librarian and do we get any moment from when we open from nine AM to, you know, eight?
Or do we need to know, or do we just need to know there's a process in place?
Whatever, just that, that because of the closure kind of came up as a, well. As long as, as long as whoever opens the library knows that they are the responsible person. That, that, from my perspective, that's sufficient. But I don't, you know, that, that's, that's, that have to be, I would imagine already the case. Well, I mean, there are many scenarios that can happen, right? Like, somebody is supposed to be the first librarian, you know, the weather related thing and they can't physically get here. I'm just saying that. Yeah, so just. You know, who's on duty? Changed, is it still the senior most person in the building is in charge?
I would have to check the policy. I'm, I'm not familiar.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
That is how.
So tomorrow morning, let's uh, let it answer.
That is how it is currently.
Or senior person.
Senior, senior most library.
It's always been the senior most.
Senior most librarian. Correct.
Um, that's how it's always been, but. But this shouldn't be, uh, I'm not sure. I guess I'm just asking, you know, if you work in retail, you know who the manager of duty is, right? Like, it's on the schedule, right? So it's no guessing, like, oh, well, she's more senior than me because she was here three months before me.
So Dana, there's a hierarchy of staff and certainly during all the transitions, the staff knows and that's a documented hierarchy. We have it as a board, that hierarchy. However, what you just highlighted is that maybe there's still some support to make sure that it's a hundred percent um.
Okay, happening. So since I'm on the H R governance, I would like that hierarchy. I don't know what it is. So maybe that's the first thing that we'll put on that committee, just to understand that and. What it looks like, because I don't know if that makes sense.
All right, and Joe Gallo is unable to join us this evening, he was already prepared for. And um, so Brian Hook's going to start. Thank you, Brian.
Joe's report has, uh, January twenty twenty third, uh, forty twenty three. Joe Gallo has prepared the statement of operating activities on a cash basis. And summary of restricted and board designated funds and capital funds detail of the central Chappaqua Central School District Public Library for the month. On December twenty twenty two and for the six months ended December thirty first, twenty twenty two. Joe Gallo has also prepared schedule of pre authorizing expenditures December twenty first, twenty twenty two through January sixteenth, twenty twenty three. And the schedule of bills payable last of January seventeenth, twenty twenty three. Information presented in the above referenced reports were derived from the data entered into library's QuickBooks accounting program. The cash transactions are complete and in good order. Joe Gallo has reviewed the library's library's bank statements and related reconciliations for December twenty twenty two. All bank accounts have been reconciled, the library books, no exception. Joe Gallo has also reviewed the supporting documentation for all items listed in the billed payable report. And has signed the related checks presented to him. All documentations for these expenditures were in good order and all invoices were properly approved. Respectfully submitted, Joe Gallo. Thank you, Joe, for preparing that. And all that's in the package that needs the detail. Um. Didn't look like getting English.
No, and I just wanted to highlight because ours, after our long range meeting, we were assured that all the purchasing of the material is. Exactly on target, even though uh, maybe due to preordering or billing, it might look a little lower, but we were assured, so. That's great. So under board designated and it's this capital fund and that's where I thought there would be a sub. Um, notation for the. Holdout, but maybe it. This, this year under receipts covers it. For ninety five thousand? So normally I thought that where I would see the, the board designated. Where we have capital fund, remember, we, we, we set aside that holdout. And so I would expect to see a line indented here that says, you know, money held for the parking lot. But I don't, but then hello here, he shows a transfer. Of an operating surplus for the parking lot. So he put money into our capital fund from our. It looks like he transferred money in from the operating, which we didn't. Uh, which we didn't actually approve the transfer of the money. We approved earmarking, so it looks like. Um, we now have. Moved money that we shouldn't have moved and we have not earmarked um. The good news is that if he was able to transfer both of those dollar amounts, then we had pretty sizable. Surplus, but I'm thinking this was in there. Well, I'm not sure because we've collected our tax money, but we haven't spent it. So I'm not sure where. There we are, but um. So I think he, he, he's not here tonight. I think we need to clarify with him that I, I don't, I don't see a problem with.
Last meeting, didn't we?
Yes.
He moves something from operating surplus into capital and.
We earmarked money within capital. We didn't actually move money from accounts. So Joe moved, it looks like he actually moved money, which, like I said, if we had, if. You know, I think we were going to talk about whether we wanted to keep money in a um. Fund balance as opposed to moving it into the capital. Uh, because we're finding that as, you know, that we need some fund balance to work with to pay for some of these projects. Uh, so. And so I'm, on the one hand, it might be that the right actions are taking place. On the, in the right timing, but on the other hand, the, the board didn't make the right requisite motions to support this. So um, it may be a little bit of a case of. Joe proactively doing the right things due to a miscommunication, but um, we need to figure out. How to reconcile this because.
Yeah, I, I actually felt like he discussed that pretty thoroughly at the December twentieth meeting. And I felt that you were pushing for uh, move to capital. Not just the earmarking, because he went, uh, and it's in our minutes. Um, he went into detail as to how that change wasn't actually required.
So, right, he didn't actually need to make a physical monetary change. He just needed to make a notation, but this. This new paperwork looks like a change took place. That's what I'm unclear on whether this is. So it may be that he, that it's just the way he's reflecting it that makes it seem like he did something, but he's not here to speak to it, so.
So do we not want to approve the December statement because of that, um, Brian?
Uh, I don't see why we wouldn't. Um, the money is gonna go into the parking lot anyways.
Right, in April or early, yes.
So it's possible that we're approving a statement that reflects. Over two hundred thousand dollars of money that's in the wrong account. But I guess it's, it's in that account. I just don't want, we're approving something we didn't approve, does that make sense? Based on what we're looking at.
Okay. We can revisit it with them, but I, I feel like he did what you asked for in December and I felt like he pushed back on that and. Their request.
There may be a miscommunication. There may be a miscommunication. What I'm, what I'm saying is that from what we're looking at on paper, he moved money that we never approved to move. So. I'm not sure. I'll abstain from this personally because I, I don't think this is accurate to what the board has. Has instructed him to do, and I don't want to necessarily approve a statement that is. Hmm, that I don't know whether he actually did.
Move back, we will, we'll decide, so.
Um. Brian, with this discussion, do you want to make a motion to approve the financial statements or would you prefer?
I would make a motion to approve and we can always go back and feel it needs to be moved back into the operating.
Well, it would be a more that we would probably vote to, well.
Oh, procedurally. So do that.
So procedurally, we may need to retroactively make the motions to move these dollar amounts in order to make good on this.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so Brian, you're making a motion to accept the financial statements. Prepared by Joe Gallo as presented with the clarification that we will, um. Revisit the issue of proper treatment for the lines noted.
Oh, yes.
I second the motion. Further discussion? Okay. Let's take a vote. I. I'm unanimous.
Yes, and.
And Brian, that included the bills as well.
Right.
Well, so we review the capital fund and we make a separate motion for the bills.
So I make a motion to pay the bills as listed.
Second the motion.
Is it unanimous?
Proceed to vote.
I, yeah, okay. Brian, that's unanimous.
Okay, next on the agenda, Bob, you know, as a personnel, do you say you have any matters to present or do we move?
No, I have no matters to present.
Okay. Okay, great. Uh, Jen, can we just note that as a library, uh, we're working with civil service to make sure that our understanding of our library is the same as our understanding. So that's something that we're undertaking with them, um, and all is well so far.
Yeah, we're doing a head count and a vacancy count. And matching that to the budgets. And another thing that I'm doing, I've requested a certification of eligible candidates for the benefits assistant vacancy. So we can start, uh, canvassing that list.
Okay.
But I have no actions for the board, but that's fine.
Excellent, did you, he went out with the same salary that we went out last time? From Doug Spence?
Uh, I, I. I spoke with civil service and. Came to a wage agreement that made sense for the position that would be appealing to people applying for it. But doesn't lock us into either a low law bid or, um, having to offer. Something too high.
What range?
It's a dollar amount. Um, I think it was in the thirty two thousand. I, I'm bad at remembering figures though, so.
Was it the same twenty one hours?
It's twenty one, um, which again, that was a point of negotiation or a point of advice that I saw from civil service. I said, what if the best candidates don't want a full-time position? And they said, well, you could always negotiate that as well, so that's part of the, uh. The only thing that civil service really needs for the listing is the, the, or needed for that listings. I won't speak broadly, I don't know what they always need, but they did need a dollar amount for the salary and so. Put something in that.
Yeah, we should give them a range.
So this is a part time at twenty one hours or a full time at twenty?
It's considered full time.
Full time, twenty one hours, okay.
For twenty one, anything over.
Over twenty one.
Anything over nineteen.
Okay, thirty five hours is a civil service work week, but for certain positions, they're exempt. Not everyone who's civil service works only their hours. Once you reach a certain job requirement, you are exempt.
Okay.
Nothing else, Bob? One person. Okay, let's move to the committee reports. Brian, can you update us on finance? I think that's first and foremost that everyone's mind is right now.
Next week, um, Bob and I are going to be, we promised to have a first draft of the budget. Soon as we have that, we'll share it with everyone. And, um, I don't think there'll be any surprises in there. Shouldn't be. And on the treasurer hire, we, uh, we've been talking to a, a firm, uh, that we think would be a good fit, their initial proposal. Uh, time estimate was, uh, significantly more than we think it would take, so we're. We are in discussions with them and they're going to submit another proposal to us to better reflect the amount of time, um, based on. Working with Chantel and Joe. And I think the cost should be more aligned with what we're, what we're paying down, so we're waiting on that. Um, that's assuming we do want to hire an outside treasurer, uh, who's recently brought to our attention that the treasurer position should be a volunteer to the community, not a paid treasurer. So I don't know how the rest of the group feels about that.
Or that that's an alternative.
Or there is an alternative, right?
A volunteer treasurer was with a paid accounting. Yes, right, so we still paid for something, yeah.
We should explore all our options and I think now I'm a little bit more banned than I'd like to help you. Well, the only cautionary point I would make is that Joe Gallo would like to be relieved of his duties, so I need to. You know, he wanted to terminate his role as a year end, so we're. We're under a bit of a gun from that.
It's going to be, Joe has acknowledged, it's going to be difficult to hire someone during tax season, so. And it's going to be difficult for someone to come on during tax season, so your earlier study, potential new treasurer could start like a new. And I had a discussion with Joe about that. That's weird, so he's, he acknowledged the best.
So is he willing to?
Yeah, he's willing to.
Continue, especially if, for example, he prepares you for these meetings rather than taking the time to attend for.
Yes, he's very happy about that.
Okay.
Same as I thought.
We'll just have to make sure we get his wisdom.
He's been very responsive.
Great. And you did get a, um, a hand raised from the community, so, right? We'll talk about that.
Oh, yeah, we got a, uh, someone offered to join the finance committee, CPA. Which is, yeah.
Um, in terms of timing with the first draft of the budget. Will we need to call a special meeting to renew that? Or is that just something that can be shared with us as part of the overall budget process?
I think we need a meeting for all of us to discuss it together, right? I think we could share the draft before we do that.
I can speak to a little bit of what we've done in the past as the finance committee works closely with the director. Um, they will answer any questions he has typically at this point, he's exploring all kinds of costing, of theater and everything. And he's bouncing ideas off of our finance committee. They're talking about, um, the needs of the library and then they'll put together draft budget. At some point, they'll circulate that to us in email. Um, we'll then have board meetings where it'll be floated and we, and we should be scheduling at least one more session specifically to go through the budget. Um, but we really want our finance committee to take it as far as possible before we start discussing it at the table. Um, and I guess the main things from past budgets. Um, and I think, I think given the fine money going down, we may want to make this the year that we. Um, not charge fines anymore, I don't know, that's something to keep, you know, it's a constant conversation.
Mm-hmm.
Um. In terms of if or when, we've had directors who have said. The kids in this town need some responsibility, that's the only place they get responsibility, need the fines alone. We've had librarians who say the fines are helpful to encourage people to return their materials. And then if we remove them, we will have less cirque because materials will come back as fast. We've also had people say that that's a burden on the patron to pay a fine. So there's a range and then there's the actual ten thousand dollars a year that it nets for the library. So it's a considered decision, it's probably the biggest one that we'll consider as a group at this table. Um, and then, you know, like I said, the other pieces, uh, we're relying on our committee to bounce ideas off of the rest of us as they go through that process. Look at the director on our behalf.
We may want to consider raising the funds, they haven't been increased, right?
Or, or increase. Yeah, but I think we just decreased, so we were headed in the other direction, but sure, anything is possible. And then, great. And, and I'm sorry, as far as the actual presenting of the budget, um, the school district is kind enough to offer us their public forum. So we take our budget presentation to the school, not because of any, uh, literally we need a public place to present. And so that is where we present our budget to the community. It happens to be a beautiful thing because their taxpayers are our taxpayers, so it is a one-to-one. It's the right audience, um, and that happens, um, at their, uh, at their board meeting and we should confirm which one. Um, and, uh, and we'll do that, um, just so we have it, because I don't want to miss the beat. And then there are timeline leading into this because we have to get our, uh, in addition to the public presentation that Bob will make on our ha, on our behalves to the community. We also then, as soon as that presentation's delivered. Hit send, it goes to the printer and for anyone who didn't come to the meeting or didn't want to go get the video of that in their mailbox. Each resident will get a budget flyer announcing exactly what we're asking. Um, so all of that is tightly coordinated, um, and, um, I know you indicated that, 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 you know, we're waiting on the ta, tax cap. And some other details, so, um, it will be, uh, a lot of waiting and planning and then a race to the end.
Can we coordinate that with the mailer? Or is it a separate mail? Sorry? Can it be combined with our safer mailer or does it have to be a separate mailing zone?
Well, it could be combined, but it is a double sided, it's typically a double sided postcard that is specifically for the.
Yeah, I'm just asking. Typically it's own.
It typically is its own postcard, a big postcard.
Okay.
Double sided, that's all, um, and it, and I would, I would recommend we leave it as a standalone because it, it literally meets a government requirement.
Okay, that's all.
Mm-hmm.
Is that everything for finance, Brian?
Yeah.
And can we turn to you?
Sure, sure, sure. I'm, I'm excited to bring to the board tonight, um, a, a couple of things. We, one, in, in referring to two policies, the remote board trusting participation meeting policy. Before we vote on that, we have to, um, approve the resolution to authorize the adoption of written procedures. Following, excuse me, a public hearing for the use of video conferencing for the conduct of public meetings. So attached to the remote policy, we have to have. A video conferencing policy, a resolution, as well as procedures related to use of video conferencing. And virtual attendance at meetings conducted by the board of trustees of the chapel pub, public library. That has all been included in your packets, so we have a couple of things to vote on for that. As well as, as of January twenty twenty, um, January twenty twenty three, there is a new edge, there is a new law. In accordance with education state law two sixty dash D, each trustee elected or appointed to the chapel library board. Shall be required to complete a minimum of four hours of trustee education annually. I will say that the New York state law requires two hours a year. But, um, our, our library is going to ask for a minimum of four hours of trustee education per year. And it covers topics, but not limited to, I'm happy to read this out loud for the meeting. It covers topics, including financial oversight, accountability, fiduciary responsibilities. And the general powers and duties of a library trustee. And there will be tracking and compliance of trustee trainings that will be reported. Um, we were, we're going to use our, um, staff assistant to help us in track of all of our trainings. On a spreadsheet that will be provided. So we have a couple of things to vote on tonight. Okay, um, I think we should start, I think resolutions will be for policy. So we'll start with the resolution, um, regarding.
Procedures.
Procedures, all right, I'm going to get this. I'm going to get this. So, uh, the resolution. To authorize, and I have it in writing for you, okay? So it, and it is on, on the packet, so. I think you can include all of this, the resolution of the board of trustees of the chapel pub public library. To authorize the adoption of written procedures following a public hearing for the use of video conferencing for the conduct of public meetings. Okay, so that's the first resolution.
And we don't vote on our resolution. Um. We, we do have to vote on that.
We have to vote on the resolution.
Okay, to pass that, doesn't it?
Okay, oh, so, um, I will make a motion to pass the resolution of authorizing the use of. Video conferencing for the conduct of, to conduct public meetings.
I second the motion to approve the resolution.
Mm-hmm, it was a year ago for Brian. So, so what we're, what the resolution we are voting on is this one that starts with pursuant to the New York. Pursuant to New York State Public Officers Law one oh three dash A two B. And it is a two-page, it goes on to a third page. And it ends with number eleven, the procedures were approved by resolution of the board following a public hearing on January twenty third, twenty twenty three would be our. Okay, so yes, so thank you, this, so we'll, we'll fill this in. I don't think we need to read the whole thing, I read the beginning and the end of the packet, so. So we will date, we will date today's date. In, in this, and then those two articles get attached to each other. So then I'd like to make a motion.
Oh, okay.
Can we take a vote on the resolution? All in favor?
All in favor?
All in favor?
I. Yes.
Okay, so the resolution passed.
Thank you, and then so moving on to passing the policy for remote or trustee pu, uh, participation in meetings policy. So I'd like to make a motion to pass our, our first policy. The, our first policy on having remote board trustees participate. At meetings via video conferencing. I don't think that's the motion. Um.
No, the motion would be each other, that would be.
Right, so I make a, um, I make a motion to adopt. The chapel pub public library remote board trustee participation at meetings policy.
I second. Well, I think we have to read it because we've never read it before. I'm not sure, um, usually we read everything in the.
Although, no. No, because it's in, it's also in the board packet.
Yeah.
It's in the board packet and of course it will be under our new policies.
On the website.
On the website.
Right, we typically do read them, but that's okay, well, that's fine. Um, I do think from a, um. Inclusion standpoint.
inclusion standpoint, reading it is always a nice thing to do, um, but that's fine.
Okay. Okay, can we put this to a vote, please? Everyone in favor? Hi. Thank you for your hard work on this.
The second, uh, policy that I, I'd like to make a motion to pass the Chapel library policy on trustee training.
I second the motion to adopt the policy on trustee training, also a new policy.
Also a new policy. Put that to a vote.
I have a question and it's not really a question. I actually feel bad that I didn't read the last policy, so I will read this one for everyone. Uh, Chapel library policy on trustee training. Public library trustees in New York State oversee an estimated 1.6 billion of the public's money and responsibility that must be undertaken by informed, thoughtful, prudent, and trustworthy library boards. Requiring trustee education will foster an understanding of complex government processes so that this responsibility is met. In accordance with New York Education Law two sixty D, beginning January first, twenty twenty-three, each trustee elected or appointed to the Chapel library board shall be required to complete minimum of four hours of trustee education annually. Such trustee education may include, but is not limited to topics such as financial oversight, accountability, fiduciary responsibilities, and the general powers and duties of a library trustee. Each trustee shall demonstrate compliance with this education requirement by filling a certificate of completion issued by one or more approved providers with the board secretary. The tracking and compliance of trustee training will be recorded and available for viewing. Modest and reasonable costing heard by a trustee in complying with the training requirement may be subsidized by the library. Should a trustee fail to comply with the above, a warning by the president will be issued. An additional noncompliance may be grounds for dismissal. Draft presented to the board for approval.
Okay, I lost track of whether we had put that to a vote.
No, we're remaining questions. So my question was just to read this. Does anybody else have any questions?
Okay, we're up to vote. Everyone in favor?
I. Okay, um, in the interest of the communication committee and interest of time, I'm going to speak very quickly because we also had our long-range meeting, uh, planned meeting, so, um, and we had some updates after that. But, um, I think the public might be interested to know, um, we are looking in, in the interest of improving communication and improving patient with our public of replacing the two movie marquee signs that are hanging on the building. Um, it might be electronic, it might be digital, we're not sure, but we are, uh, looking at that. We are also talking about leveraging our current avenues of communication already. Our in-the-town newsletter, we had a long discussion about our e-newsletter. Encourage everybody to sign up for the e-newsletter and we also had a discussion of the paper mailers. Um, and we had a, uh, I think in important discussion about feedback loops and how we can engage more in those professional patrons that program evaluation versus, uh, surveys. And it looks like because we are using the MailChimp and we have all the emails related to about fifteen hundred, you know, or so folks that are doing it, but there might be a way of, of dropping periodic surveys and maybe solving some of those ALA, um, mission goals with regards to feedback. So we will continue this, Bob is on it. That's all for time.
Um, and just circling back to policy and bylaws, I just wanted to reiterate Pam mentioned earlier in this meeting that she is, has presented a new patron conduct policy. So hopefully we'll be moving on to that.
And yes, yes, thank you. Um, let me just, sorry, one, I forgot to mention. So because we have, um, terminated our relationship with MCCMC, right? That is right. Uh, so Karen's no longer doing it. Bob did report that there is a staff person taking on some of this website, website updates. Okay, and also I did want to raise, uh, we had mentioned last time whether or not we want to do a trustee video for upcoming votes, and I don't know at this point, since we don't have the caring group, if that's something that we need to go outside to hire somebody for, or.
Can you repeat the question to me?
We had spoken about doing a short video on the library news thing about what it is to be a trustee to encourage folks to raise their hand to be electing.
Um, I think we're speaking with our team member and to see if that can be, a team program. So I don't have.
Okay.
I don't have an answer for you. I'll say that it's in development.
Okay, perfect. Because I, I think we would like to have that, especially in a group with someone like Liz who's been on for five years and that would be for five years about that to encourage more, uh, community people to run.
Yeah.
And, and about the term, um, we may want to consider changing the term limit to shorter terms to encourage more people to run.
Exactly. Yeah, great idea.
That's all. Okay, thank you, Dana.
Okay, um, building in Browns, we, uh, included a presentation addressing the state of various, um, issues underway in terms of RFPs and, uh, maintenance and repairs. Uh, just to hit a few highlights, Bob, uh, has worked with our consultant to finalize the facade RFP, um, that will be going out this week. We've identified, for reference, five or six bidders, um, for that. And I believe the debate for that proposal and for those proposals is, uh, March ten. So that involves, it's, it's described fully in this document, but, but basically it's an evaluation of the exterior of the building. Parts of the building are, uh, deteriorating, uh, and in need of repair, as well as consideration of uh, utilization of our courtyards and greater accessibility, uh, and needed repairs there. The electronic signs are part of this RFP consideration, so it's, it's pretty broad ranging. Uh, yeah, and the other important area would be the entrance to the library and consideration of the, um, nineteen seventies round planter, our water feature, some of those disparate elements. So that will be going out. The work started today on what we've been calling the mixed job RFP. That's addressing the toddler restroom as well as various repairs, uh, around the library, including, um, reinstalling a sink in the reference area of the library. And they've estimated, I believe, two weeks to conclude that. So there will be some disturbance. Uh, but they've set up plastic walls, et cetera, to try and minimize any, uh, inconvenience for patrons and staff. Uh, we have included, and, and we'll, we'll speak to that in a moment, uh, proposal for adding striping. We've spoken about the resurfacing contract, C C N Suns is the vendor selected. And they have presented a modified proposal with an additional thirty-five hundred of costs uh, to add that striping. Frankly, it's far less than we were led to believe would be required. Uh, so all, all in all, good there. Uh, forgive me, on the, uh, mixed job RFP, we also had a change order. We've, we've spoken of this in prior meetings. The change order was finalized at fifty-five hundred to include the, uh, finishing of an office conference room wall, uh, the correction of the sinks, um, at the bottom of our gallery walk and the installation of a spigot in the children's courtyard. We will speak to that and it's included in the packet as well. Um, some other developments, we had a leak, um, developed as, um, it's been described to Bob and I, Pam and I, uh, as well, the, uh, there was a problem with the pressure valve, uh, which wasn't properly regulating the water pressure coming into the building. We had leaks in the children's activity room and the staff kitchen. Uh, that's been repaired, uh, and the water damage in the children's activity room has been mitigated with, um, resin tiles for, for drying, et cetera. Actually, the mixed job RFP vendor is going to, um, assist us by reinstalling those tiles as, as part of their, their job. Um, the next step with that, um, which, which uh, that our consultant will be calling up on is to do a deep clean um, of the children's activity room so that we can return that to service. Those are the major issues. We've got a broken window in the children's area, uh, that is going to be repaired by Pleasantville Glass. Uh, shortly, we're also asking Pleasantville Glass to see if they will, if they are able to address the um, strange purple film that we have on the children's area windows. Uh, otherwise we may need to, um, consider proposals for replacement. Anything you can think of, Bob, that's not addressed in that? I think those were the major issues. Um, Dana, did you want to say anything about?
Another new committee will.
We'll do to that in February.
Sort of, yeah. I had brought two proposals with me this evening for, um, for us to consider. Um, these are safety and security proposals. They have not been put in the packet. I'm going to reference them by a proposal number and a dollar amount for the purposes of my motions. And these are things that we did just discuss in executive session, so everyone at this table is familiar. So, uh, the first one will be proposal number twenty-three zero eight. Uh, uh, so the, so I'm making a motion to, um, to allow the director to enter into an agreement with Strategium Security in the amount of thirty thousand, one hundred and fifty-six dollars and thirteen cents on the proposal number two-three-zero-eight.
I second the motion.
All in favor?
I.
One. The second proposal, I'll make the motion, um, I would like to make a motion to allow the director to enter into an agreement with Strategium Security against proposal number twenty-three oh nine in the dollar amount of thirty-one thousand, seven hundred and twenty-four dollars and sixty cents. Hold on, uh, sorry, no, never mind. That's correct. That is correct.
Our second is.
All in favor?
I. I wanted to add, and this group has discussed it, that this, these proposals involve a vendor uh, that is utilized by Chapel Central School District and operates under Bochi's bin, uh, which also gave us comfort with the pricing of the proposals. And. Bob, do you want to make a motion with respect to the bills presented?
I'm sorry?
But. Okay, something else, some other bill?
Yes, in the packet, we had the. Do you want to start with WLS perhaps?
Oh, yeah, the WLS contract that we previously discussed. Was a contract we had in place, but they sent an amended version to reflect the actual number of computers. Um, the library director can't move anything, but if the president would call for a motion to accept that contract, I'll go ahead and sign it.
Oh, they did this to us again where they didn't hold it up, so you're just going to read down.
It's now ninety thousand, eight hundred and ninety-two dollars and forty-six cents.
Yeah, well, so all of these numbers that we previously approved are the same. The only one that's changed is the maintenance service number, correct?
Correct. And that increases by forty-five hundred, uh, with respect to the additional five computers included.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. It's a device support and that's a change.
The glass should all be consistent with the old one. You double check that?
Yeah, yes. Yeah, there is a page, I'm just not quite able to easily.
Um, okay, I made a moment and to accept the revised information technology service level amendment.
Thank you.
Between Westchester Library System or WLS and Chapel library, um, the amendment takes the fee from the previously board-approved amount of eighty-six thousand, six hundred and forty-two dollars and forty-six cents and increases it by forty-five hundred to ninety thousand, eight ninety-two forty-six. Do I have a second?
I'm saying, what is the? I'm sorry, I didn't hear the beginning of, so your motion was to enter into this agreement?
Some, the revised agreement for the additional forty-five hundred beyond what was already previously approved.
Right.
Pam, you seconded?
Yes, I did.
All in favor?
I.
Okay, the additional costs. I'll make the motion that we accept the revised contract from the C C N Suns, which is modified from what was previously approved and earmarked by this board uh, to include the services of striping, which is the terminology used for the lines that indicate, um, traffic flow and parking spots, et cetera. And the increase is thirty-three hundred. Over thirty-five hundred, you've got it right there. For a total of a hundred and seventeen thousand, three hundred and seven and fifty, fifty cents. Do I have a second?
A second? Any discussion? Motion's passed. Oh, perfectly. Oh, I didn't. All in favor?
I.
Forgive me. It's okay. We were hoping that one would pass because we couldn't think of anyone who didn't want new front parking lot.
Right.
Especially our staff. Sorry, staff, we've been working on this for a while.
Okay, I further make a motion, uh, for the expenditure of fifty-five hundred dollars for IQ, our current vendor for the next job RFP. And this represents a change order from the previously approved expense for the broader job involving the toddler restroom and the reference.
But, but can we just keep the motions clean and make it that we, um, that, you know, We authorize the director to engage in the name of the company for the amount. Because all, all that's great detail for the discussion, but for the motion, let's try to keep them really concise. So I'll second your motion. It, no, did no one seconded it yet, so I'll second it, and it is to allow the director to engage IQ Contracting Inc. And Associates. Uh. For the amount of additional proposed. Items in the amount of five thousand, five hundred dollars.
I second the motion.
I second, you made the first motion, I just rewrote it a little for us. So the motion on the table is, as it's been stated, Jen is making the motion, I'm seconding.
All in favor?
I.
I. Uh, thank you, um. Asia. So for clarification, we've got a proposal in the board packet from Atlantic Westchester. This was actually a contract, uh. That was allowed to expire, one, one thing this, uh, board with this director is, um. Engaging in is to set up a tracker that's included in the Building and Browns report. Uh, of the contracts relating to facilities, so that we aren't in this position again. However, Atlantic Westchester operates under a Bochi's bid, uh, and has extended favorable pricing to us. Uh, so they have proposed, uh, annual fee. We were previously under a three-year contract that's detailed in the packet. They have proposed an annual fee of eight thousand, eight hundred dollars. Uh, while I'm commenting even more exciting, um, our consultant has been working with Atlantic Westchester. Because we've been pressing them for the best possible filtration that, that we could, uh, arrange. And they are able to present us with a proposal, which we should have, um. Either for special meeting consideration or more likely consideration at the February board meeting. Uh, to take our quality of filtration up to MERV thirteen. I, as a lead person, um, from my research of MERV ratings, as well as the information provided by Atlantic Westchester. I can tell you that, uh, surgical, surgical room would be at MERV fourteen. So this would be taking our library from MERV eleven, um, which would be high-quality commercial operation, uh, to, uh. Certainly, I'm going to improve level, and I think will greatly please our staff. Uh, as well as our patrons. So that's to come. For now, I make a motion, uh, for our director to work with Atlantic Westchester to. Accept their proposal of an additional year of service affecting. January first, twenty twenty-three, for the amount of eight thousand, eight hundred dollars.
I'll second.
All in favor?
I.
Motion's passed. Can't tell if that was everything. Eight fifty-nine.
Okay.
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting at eight fifty-nine. For a second. Uh, forgive me, and, and we actually have friends representation here. So forgive me, we. Always want to leave time for public comments, uh, we will ask, we restrict any comments to three minutes. Uh, we have agreed in December that we would. In particular, extend an invitation to friends of the Chappaqua Library when they can join us, um, to share. Their thoughts and developments with respect to friends as part of that period. Do we have anyone online who's something to say? Want to? Joe Benfica? You had a successful appeal? Oh, yeah, everything. The annual appeal for friends, we thank everyone who contributed. Okay, and with that. I will make a motion for adjournment at nine oh two PM. Do I have a second?
All in favor?
Large one?